I guess they're starting the meeting. I can't hear them either. Which is hands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
I can't hear anything.
I can't either. Trudy, can you hear them?
I can't hear anything as well.
Michelle, can you hear anything?
No, I cannot.
Rick, can you hear anything?
Yeah, I hear it. I hear you.
Yeah, do you hear them at the meeting?
I do not.
We go.
There we go. I keep losing.
Mayor Pollitt, here. Here. Councilor Sledoff.
Here.
There's a lot of background noise. If everyone could mute, that would be super helpful. You have some children at your house? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Sledoff.
My computer went small and I was trying to find some way to get back in, but I got a picture and I'll do, turn the volume until I get it out.
Great, thank you. All right, any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? Did you already have that one in here?
The additional information.
Counselors, any?
I had one I wanted to discuss is the minutes and the videos on the city website.
Okay. Let's put that at nine point eight. Anything else? Any other additions?
Nothing.
No. Okay, moving on. Public comment. So, public comment is three minutes. We ask that you state your name and address and you have three minutes to speak. I'll ask if there's anyone here in person that has public comment first. Karen Thompson, go ahead.
This relates to, I applied to be on a committee. And I guess we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but kind of aside from that, I found out as I applied that right now in the city ordinance, it says that we have to have seven people for a quorum here on a resolution. And my feeling after living here part of forty years is that that's probably impossible in a, with the number of committees we have. Having seven people show up and be ready to, I think that's, that's never going to happen. And I have a lot of energy for doing some work. I don't want to wait for seven people. So I would be up for, I don't know, but something a citizen can do, but for making, somebody proposing some changes and maybe even bringing it down to three because I'd like to see some work get done on those committees. So anyway, that's the, that's the comment that I have.
Thank you, Karen. We'll finish public comment and let you respond to her. Is there anyone on, is anyone else here in person that has public comment? I think I know why you're all here, so. Okay, so now to the Zoom. If there is anyone in the Zoom that has public comment, I see Trudy's got her little emoji hand raised. So if anyone else, if you can find your hand on your screen, please raise it. If you cannot, when there's a gap in between, just go ahead and unmute yourself and start talking. So we'll start with Trudy Hammond, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Trudy Hammond. Seven, six, three, four, nine, Willamette Way, Oak Ridge, Oregon, and I would just love to give a big, huge shout out and thank you to all the people who came together to bring in a new service, which is the HIV Alliance. Thank you all who participated in getting them here.
Thank you, Trudy. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that has public comments? Like I said, just if you can't find the hand, go ahead and unmute yourself and start talking. All right, Councilor Kenyon, did you want to answer, Karen?
Yeah, Karen, I just wanted to point out so that you know, typically, most committees have seven members, but a quorum is half of that plus one. So they're not required to have seven people in attendance to meet, but they have to have half of that plus one. So that's four usually.
I mean, just, I'm curious, I'd be curious down the line to look and see of the committees that we have, how often they need and how many times any of them have four, or let alone seven members. That's just something I'm going to do a little research on if possible and.
Yeah, so after the meeting, get a copy of this. This has all of our committees on it. I'm happy to sit down and talk about each and every one of them.
And then I'll do that as well.
Also view all the ordinances which establish those.
Yeah.
Online, and those would need to be changed in order to make the changes you're proposing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Probably worth looking at.
Committee under resolutions, right?
Yeah, did I say ordinance? I meant resolution.
Uh huh, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, any, no more public comments? All right, councillor or actually mayor comments. I as well want to thank all those involved with the HIV Alliance. They came up to Oak Ridge today. I haven't got a chance to have a full report, but as council recalls, that was a part of Sherri Kendall's presentation back in July. So that is just the next step in the NA meetings that are occurring there at Green Waters. My other big thing I wanted to mention is a huge thank you to James Clevenger for all the work that he put in for the town hall. I think it went off pretty well. I think I wish, of course, there would have been more people there, but overall coordination and hard work that you put into it is greatly appreciated. I know Bobby and Dawn and I got a chance to work with you and Colleen on it, and it was a lot of work, a lot of time that people don't get to see that you put in behind the scenes to make all that happen. It's a lot longer than just the two hour presentation. It's weeks and weeks of effort, so it's greatly appreciated.
Yes.
That's all I have for tonight. Councillor comments? Any councillor comments online? All right, moving on, consent agenda.
I think you're frozen.
Did we leave City Hall?
I can't hear anything as well.
They just left.
They gone, we lost them.
It says you're the host now, Audie.
You're not Big Daddy.
I think our councillor Coker should be taking over.
Well, they're still in the meeting. We're just disconnected from it.
Yeah, with us being on here, it would be me to take over, but I don't know about being on here because I don't know if they realize they're gone.
Yeah, how do we reconnect with them?
Somebody call.
Somebody have to call. I don't have my phone with me. It's on the charger. Thanks, Trudy.
I got it.
Thanks, councillor Coker.
I sent a message to James.
Thank you, I see their picture.
He got the message.
Okay, they're muted.
Yeah, he's going to try and reconnect.
Sorry, guys, our internet went down. But just for the record, we just sat here and didn't speak. Okay, back in progress at six twelve. We were discussing eight point one about the time the internet went out and we do not have minutes from that meeting. So we're moving on to nine point one, committee appointments. Counselors, you guys should have applications in front of you. I see Karen Thompson right here in the green vest. Linda Dunham right here in the gray jacket. Jill Martin is online and Trudy Hammond is online. So let's go ahead and start with Karen. Looking for my paperwork to change it. There it is. So Karen, if you want to first, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested and we'll ask possibly a few questions and then.
Okay, well, I applied for the public safety committee and I guess the timing of applying, I decided to apply now because I feel better about how people conduct themselves in this meeting. I was previously embarrassed by people being councillors, being, I felt treated disrespectfully. And so I just wanted to be part of that and I feel good about how I know James a little bit. I've gotten to know Chrissy a little bit. I know some people on this committee and I care about the community a lot. I just, and I feel better about contributing something at this point. I, I'm retired, mostly retired now, and I worked for about forty-five years as a mental health therapist in jails and prisons and county mental health. I did crisis response or police and drug court work and worked in all the prisons in Salem and I've been lucky enough to somehow interact with people that are kind of on the fringe in a way that sets pretty clear limits, but is loving. And I know most of the people who are without a home in our community and a lot of people with mental illness here and I, I read something about things and I had neighbors talk to me about the things that have happened here crime wise, like, you know, thefts and break-ins in people's garages and people's cars getting broken into at trailheads and that's something that matters to me because I love the woods. And I'm aware, you know, that we have limited police, you know, time here. And also that the DA in Lane County has, you know, is not prosecuting a lot of lower level crimes. So I have some really specific ideas that I'd be excited to share with some people about how as citizens we could address these things. And because what you see on Facebook, we have pictures of, you know, a guy or two people that are like rooting around in people's garages and we know who it is and people just say, well, there's nothing that can be done, but that's not, that's not accurate. There, I may not have something to do right now, but something can be done and I think we should all pull together and find ways and creative, outside the box ways of doing that. And one of the things that I thought about was some citizen citizen participation and community service that would be even citizen supervised and someone like myself, I'm real capable of doing that and not having things get out of hand. So like I say, I just, I care a lot about Oak Ridge and I, you know, that's a quality of life kind of issue, the deaths and the break-ins and things. And it'd be wonderful to get, you know, group of people together who came up with some ideas about that. So that's basically why, why I applied.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. Counselors, if you have any questions for Karen?
She answered everything.
Yeah.
You got mine.
Yeah. Counselors online, do you have any questions for Karen?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you, Karen, for applying and I think you're going to be a perfect fit for the committee.
Cool, thanks.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Karen Thompson to the public safety committee.
I'll say that.
Any other discussion? Right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Mayor Hollis.
Aye.
Councillor Hooker.
Aye.
Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Sledoff.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much for volunteering. I think we're all excited that you're definitely, you fit the shoes, something we need on that committee, so thank you. Councillor Coker is the councillor that sits on that committee, so you can connect with her whenever you're ready. Next is Linda Dunham.
Mayor, I just noticed I forgot to mention that in addition to the budget committee, Linda Dunham's also applied for the WAC subcommittee.
Oh, awesome. Okay, so Linda, have your application. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in those two committees and then we'll just do the same process.
Um, I moved here about five years ago. My grandkids, my daughter, and I love, I love the community and I haven't been out in the community very much, so I would really like to participate. And let's see, I did take care for twenty-five years and did plant service, or I did plants and businesses. And then I retired and I just have, I'm in these, so I'd really like to take and get in and you know, see where I needed at, you know, where I needed anywhere else that I could. I have a job.
Counselors, do you have any questions for Linda?
I'm just wondering what budget committee type of experience you would have that would.
You stole my question.
Huh?
You stole my question.
You stole your question. I'm just looking to.
Wasn't big numbers, but I work with numbers, you know, budgets.
Any other questions from councillors? Counselors on Zoom, any questions?
I don't have a question, but a comment. The budget committee doesn't start meeting until after the New Year, usually. March or April. There might be opportunities before then for education, budget training online.
Sometimes that starts in December for the training.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we'll probably be starting budget stuff earlier this year. I'm thinking like January, February. Anyways, so what was the other one? Oh, the WAC subcommittee and that's, I think Christie Hollis is the councillor that's on that one, so she would reach out about when they meet and whatnot.
What are you guys going to do with the block?
That's kind of what the committee's purpose is, is to talk about the renovations and decide what happens with the future, but obviously restoring it is utmost importance and then to get businesses in there. So the committee really is part of inviting businesses and getting all those players on the same table. Councillor Whitney's involved in that and as well as Jen Hooker.
You know, trying to get some community services back in that area of the community.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and for it also to be a place for the community to use, like the gym and the kitchen and those things. Yeah. All right, any other questions from councillors? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. A motion, please, from anyone?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I make the motion, we appoint Linda Dunham to the Budget Committee and WAC Subcommittee.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Whitney and seconded by councillor Coker. Any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Sledoff.
Aye.
Councillor Hooker.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Hollis.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome aboard and thank you. You'll be busy when it comes budget season. Yeah. Okay, next up is Jill Martin. Here, I see you there. So if you wouldn't mind unmuting it and just telling us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the library board.
Well, it's hard for me to give short answers, but I will do my best. Basically, I have been here since two thousand and six. I really, really love Oak Ridge. I actually never, I've, I've been involved in a lot of different things like the Oak Ridge Art Council and I'm on the theater board, but I just never thought of being on a committee until recently. I think it was James posted something online about a whole, a lot of committee openings. And I thought, you know, this is a really good time in my life for me to step up and get involved in this community at a higher level than what I am. And then I found out there was an opening on the library board and I just love libraries. I'm a book fiend. I actually had, well, I have a degree in English literature, but I didn't do my master's thesis, so I don't actually have it, but I, you know, I started reading when I was like four years old and I just feel like to echo what some of the other folks have said here. I, I've been here a long while. I just feel like I want to give something back to this community that has really given me so much and yeah, and the library just seems a good fit for me, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Any questions from councillors?
I'll say I've known Jill for a long time and I think she's the next one to go library.
I.
Thank you, Dawn.
Fine.
Totally agree.
Thank you.
Good job on recruiting her, James. Sledoff, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that she'd be a good asset to our committee down there, so I'm all for it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
I'd like to.
Go ahead, Audie.
I'd like to point Jill as a member of the board. I can't find the paperwork up on my computer for some reason. But I'd like to make a motion that we put her on the library board.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Sledoff and seconded by councillor Kenyon. Any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Sledoff.
Aye.
Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Mayor Hollis.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Hooker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome aboard, Jill, thank you.
Thank you all.
And I'm the one that's on the board for library.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna, do I have to stay now?
No.
I'm sorry, I just, you know, thank you all very, very much.
Bye.
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 All right, Trudy Hammond, you're up next. We have your application for the WAC admin committee and public safety. You are great.
Thank you. Well, I've decided to reduce some of the dog program, which will free up a lot of my time to be able to contribute again. And I was formerly on the public safety and the admin, so I would like to get back into those two and I'm excited about the new opportunities for the WAC. And I have some ideas that could possibly benefit as far as what services can go in and that networking that can mesh together with a wraparound type of service. So that's my excitement for those committees to join. I have, let's see. In other experiences, I've been a CASA court appointed special advocate. I've, I've had two, this is my second successful nonprofit business. I was born and raised here, left for a while and came back. I just, I adore this community and all the new people that have come in. It's really exciting to see that everybody is is networking and watching out for each other and one of the public safety things that I hope to see come back is the neighborhood watch program in which Chief Martin designated some really good quadrants that I think would be a great foundation for for neighborhood watch. So I, I would like to hopefully pick up where he left off with trying to present the idea because it wasn't a city program, but if we can get the people to come in to these meetings and maybe give some ideas for neighborhood watch, it would be great to have a, a community neighborhood watch that's not city liable. If that makes sense.
Counselors, any questions for Trudy? My, my only question is, this is definitely, this is a workload to be on all three and I know you are super ambitious and really love this community. So I really appreciate you extending yourself out there this much. That's a, that's a huge commitment, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I must say, Trudy, I've worked with you before and I'd be glad to work with you again on that admin committee.
Right on.
I just want to say, Trudy, I was very sad when you decided to leave the public safety committee and I'm very happy that you've decided to come back and we can start having our meetings now and move forward.
Yes. Thank you.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion, we appoint Trudy Hammond to the WAC Subcommittee, the admin committee and the public safety committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Whitney and seconded by councillor Coker. Any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Sledoff.
Aye.
Mayor Hollis.
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome aboard to the WAC and welcome back for the other two committees. Thank you, Trudy.
Thank you, guys.
I just wanted to make a, a point out here because we're on this topic with the committee seats. I reviewed the chart that we've all been within and I know that some of the, you see how they have the seats on this side? And there's the people's names in there. I know that some of the names are in the wrong places.
Right.
Okay, so you know that too.
Yeah, but I don't know how to track the, make you know.
I already have it all in the spreadsheet. I emailed it to you a while back, but I could send it to you again if you want.
Instead of beginning, it was just hard to coordinate between your spreadsheet and this spreadsheet. We can work together.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that spreadsheet has a column that has
Right, I saw, I saw that.
So then, yeah.
It was hard when I was trying to transfer them all, but we'll figure it out.
Okay.
We can ask for committee chairs and be to bring the next council meeting a list. We can ask for committee chairs and need to bring the next council meeting a list of who's expiring or expired, and we can renew them all.
Yeah.
It's neat or something.
So after tonight's meeting, we really need people on RTMP and TRT.
We don't have a TRT committee.
Okay, was, that was not in the, that was not in the resolution.
Right.
It used to be that name.
Correct.
Okay. So library board, that's Phil's library board, correct? It fills the Budget Committee, I feel like April Allen's term is up though, at the end of this year.
What was that?
Okay, anyways. Thank you for your work on this, the committees are definitely filling up. Thanks for everybody that applied tonight, that's great.
And if you don't want to stay and watch us for this, no, you don't have to, but please do.
All right, report from the Audit Committee, nine point two. Are you leading that, James or Dawn? You're the chair of the Audit Committee.
Oh, sure, if you want me to.
Are you preparing, James?
It's more for, it's not a question and answer for councillors to make questions. And to let councillors know that we have their printed copy. We have new mailboxes for councillors somewhere in City Hall, I don't know where Mia was working on that. But they'll be available and there's also a copy for public view front with the budget.
Okay, could you guys maybe give just a small summary of what happened on Friday's meeting and then we can save further discussion for next, for next meeting?
Over, do you want to go in the management letter?
That was just sent out and what confused me about that management letter is it's dated May 2nd.
And for transparency, is this on the city's website yet or will it be?
It's on the state website.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, Jackie, do you know if you, do you have a little bit audit yet on the city website?
Will you have it, so we can get it on there?
Okay, I know that'll be the next question asked.
Yeah. So I think we kind of, whatever, we did it, we didn't have anything that came up real big, there was sixteen, two and seventeen. Okay, can I have a coffee? Or it might be the management letter that has the significant deficiencies.
So as far as compliance, it said in connection with our testing, nothing came to our attention that causes to believe the city of Oak Ridge is not in substantial compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts and grants, including the provisions of Oregon Revised Statutes as specified in Oregon Administrative Rules 162 death ten dash zero 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 through 162 dash one zero dash three twenty of the minimum standards for audits of Oregon municipal corporations except as follows. When reviewing the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, it was not noted that the city published a notice of the budget hearing on June fourteenth when the budget hearing was held on June seventeenth. Oregon budget law requires the notice of a budget hearing will be advertised five to thirty days prior to the meeting according to ORS two nine four twenty four four eight. Expenditures were within authorized appropriations except as noted on page seventeen. I think these are over expenditures for that year, they are. So this is the general fund and some other funds are appropriated at the department level along with transfers and contingencies. Budgets amounts showing the basic financial statements reflect the original appropriations and supplemental appropriations if they occur. Expenses of the various funds were within authorized appropriations except for the following. So the funds that were over expended were the, under the general fund, the police department, library and unallocated, emergency services fund, the wood stove replacement fund, the water fund and the wastewater fund. And that was really the only findings that we had, other than some notes for the management, just some best practices that they would like to see happen. And I can we'll put this online with the financial report as well.
Just so that everyone knows, this audit is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So July one, all the way to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, it's not the current fiscal year that just completed, it's the year before. So I would like to propose that councillors take this home, review it and then we review it at the first meeting in December, maybe. If there's questions, if there's not questions, then it doesn't have to be discussed, but that would be Thursday, December first. It gives everyone a month to look this over, ask questions to James and Colleen. Are you, would you guys, are you okay with that, councillors Sledoff, Coker and Bjornson?
Yes.
How about you guys?
And we'll have books down here for those of you who haven't picked yours up yet.
Okay, what date was that again?
December first, it's the first council meeting in December. This would be a time, this gives everyone a month to review the audit, to ask questions and have anything brought and to that council meeting, do you have a question, I think it's good that it's brought to the city administrator. He can answer you in person, but then also we could also have that question answered in public at that meeting in case others have the same question.
And also I wanted to point out that I did get that letter to the council that they talked about in our audit meeting and I emailed that to our whole council today. And I saw that you guys also got it from the auditor.
Right, which is the May, the letter dated May 2nd, all right.
Um, it's a letter to council, I actually didn't look at the date on it, but the one you're talking about with the letter to, or it's called the management letter and that's actually written by us. That was probably written by Kevin Martin last May. It's where the auditors well, I know they sent it off to you, I think, Colleen, to ask for it to be done and submitted back.
Well, that's not the management letter, this is, this is from
That's from the prior year, I think.
Oh, yeah, the prior year.
Which would have been Brian.
So that would have been Brian that wrote that.
I, I didn't have any Brian, the thing you emailed today is signed by Lloyd Rogers.
Oh, that's a letter from them to the council.
That's the only thing I got.
Right. Sorry, the other thing that I brought up was at the beginning of this conversation, you said the management letter was dated May 2nd and that was confusing to you, so I was trying to answer that as well. Because that, that's usually always written by our city administrator to be part of our audit.
Right, but I'm saying they're letters to us, both of you, right, are both dated May 2nd, yeah, which was kind of odd that they've had letters prepared since May 2nd, but couldn't get us the audit, so.
Oh, I think they were waiting on that, the second review of the audit really, what was
Yeah, they're big guys, yeah.
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 On vacation.
This is true, can you also explain how the one notice about the withholdings and how that's no longer happening?
Oh, yes, I don't have that with me, but
You can just briefly explain.
So when our audit was not completed in time, we got a notice from
Department of Revenue.
Yeah, the Department of Revenue stating that they are going to withhold ten percent of our funds that would normally come from shared funding and whatnot until our audit was completed, so the auditors did send in our letters and everything's been posted and all that, so we should be getting that. They just hold it, it's not like they don't give it to us, but it comes back to us, so now we'll be getting that additional ten percent that they were holding until we finished our audit, so.
And they sent an email letting us know that they're, we're no longer being withheld. Thank you. All right, any more questions on audit? Okay, so December first, be sure if you have questions, email them to James and Colleen, probably see, email them both would probably be best. And then bring questions to the December first meeting. All right, moving on to nine point three, transient warming center proposal, Kathy Holston, are you still online?
Yes, I am.
Awesome, hi Kathy.
Hi.
You want to lead this one?
Uh, yeah, and I think, I think Susan Hardy is there too, so she can help answer any questions and Ken Wright is also on, on the, on our call too, so our, our committee met last night and three of our committee members and with others and James and I think also went and reviewed the building that you asked us to look at over at Horton Park and, and after reviewing it discovered that, as you see in James's report, there were some issues about you know, fire safety, fire marshal, and it just didn't seem that that building was going to be adequate. So we, we as a group decided that we would again request from you that we could use the Green Waters Community Building. We talked a, a great deal about the times for starting and looked at James's recommendation that we start at eight o'clock and we decided that what we would like to do would be do a, to modify that a little bit and on Thursdays we will not start until eight o'clock, but on every other night we will start at six thirty, which means our volunteers would be there at six and, and we would be open for business at six thirty. And on Thursday nights, when they do have someone who's using the building, our volunteers will be there ahead of time so that anyone who might come thinking, oh, they can get in. We're going to give them an alternative and go over to the covered area of the park if there happens to be anybody waiting, so we thought we would give that a try and see how that works and we're open to changing that too. So we, we are requesting that we can move forward with with our announcements as to location and the Green Waters Community Building. We are in discussion with the school about, and with James, about storage units, what we can do and where we can store things and we'll continue to have those discussions, but we're excited about being able to do this, we think it's a really good location and that it will make a huge difference for those who, who need a, a place to be warm when we start to get cold and as you can see, we're starting to get cold already, so. James or Susan, is there anything that you think we should add there?
Well, we did decide, we did agree that we would operate from the first of December through the end of February. We are high so operational, unless at the end of February it's so terribly cold that we might renegotiate something then, but basically those three months will be the month of our, month of our service. And we did, and we did agree that if someone rented the building and wanted to use it during the time, we normally would be using it from six thirty on, we would change our hours of occupancy that evening and just go in after they were done. So it wouldn't be, you're paying any funds that might be raised on Tuesday.
Great, thank you.
You had a question, the ask you on the community.
Sure.
I'm curious what, if, has there been a temperature established that, you know, it has to be here or below where people can come in, thirty-two degrees is what we've agreed on.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question about the when I was doing this before, I think it was usually the day before when they would determine that we need to be open tomorrow and start looking for volunteers, is that how it still works?
We have agreed that we would, we would make the decision by ten o'clock on whatever morning that, so that by that night we would have volunteers, but by ten o'clock in the morning.
Day of.
Oh, on day of, huh, okay, so then is it going to be real easy that people check in and find out that it's not already rented for that day?
Well, my hope would be that that would be fairly easy.
Yeah.
Based on our discussion.
Yeah, they're going to let me know every time.
Yeah.
Plan to be open.
He's going to give us, oh, everybody, you have to notify that we're going to be open, so.
Yeah, because I want to notify the police department to open as well and care for them.
You have your own volunteers or are you going to be recruiting volunteers as well?
We will be recruiting volunteers as well as the ones that we have, we do not, we do not have at this point an adequate supply of volunteers manning for the entire three months. I mean, we, we did it last year, we went along with us that we needed and it meant that people were three and four nights a week each to do that, that's the hardest thing to do.
Right.
So did we determine, we're going to ask everybody to volunteer apps?
I'm reading my mind tonight.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So what's that?
The waivers, the, the volunteer waivers to the city absolutely, otherwise you can't do it.
Yeah.
We discussed that and we agreed.
Yeah, that was my worry was liability, I mean, never know. My question is, where are you guys advertising, so transient people, how do they get the message? Where can they find that out? Hi, Robert, just go ahead.
What we've done in the past is we had sandwich boards that we had like at Center Market and Raze and up in place along Highway fifty-eight, we have some a banner and some signs that we put on the WAC that probably we will put, not at the WAC, but they will be posted somewhere and we're looking at other ways that we can let people know we that most of those people, most of the people that we are talking about have cell phones, we
So I was just going to say, I, I know for a fact they, they are on social media. Yeah, not all, but many.
But, but we're still looking at any way we can find, make sure that they know when we're open, that, that they know on any given day, whether we're not open at six thirty but have to wait until eight o'clock, that we make sure that that's covered.
Okay.
Mayor, a request was made from the group to possibly get some signs made from the council.
I was just going to say, I wrote down sandwich boards, we, they, we have, we just are purchasing ten sandwich boards, so maybe that could be something council discusses of buying the inserts for them, is that what you were thinking?
Correct, because there's two sides to every insert, so we could make some and then they've also asked for me to get them the pricing. I guess they want to buy additional.
Do you have money, does your?
We, we don't have money as a government station, so.
Okay.
Let's see.
We were talking about St. Vincent's Hall, I'm something.
Okay.
So I do have one more thing, just a concern and and just before I state my concern, I just want to say that I support this, but my concern is as people within our transient population learn of where to go, that on the nights that it wouldn't be open, that we're going to have more problems with them being in that location. I'm trying to stay in that area, you know, knowing where the supplies are, all that stuff, so that just concerns me because it is really out of you know, kind of outside of where most people are, you know, it's kind of an isolated location.
Our understanding is that we have a significant number of our people that that's where they are located most of the time, is in the Green Waters.
Well, I know they're in that area, but I, I'm just concerned that it's going to drive more people to that area and then staying around the building, you know, and just just the comfort level of this is where we go now, you know, this is where we can be. Just the comfort level of this is where we go now, you know, this is where we can be. Well, it's just a concern, and I think it's a valid concern, and it's not anything I wanted to argue about, it's just.
No.
A concern, and I think it's something um as we move forward and look for other locations, um, you know, just to acknowledge that. This may not be an option forever.
And we, well, no, we have, we're we're thinking future.
Okay, yeah.
But um but we have talked about that idea, about what we need to do to make sure that people don't think that that's a place where they can. Hang out, and so if somebody comes and they're using the building, they don't have. People just barging in on whatever they're doing, we've talked about that and are looking at ways that we can make sure that doesn't become a problem.
Okay. Yeah, I also share Bobby's concern, I think a lot of community members have reached out to us. In concern that the Green Waters Building, you know, where they have their birthday parties and all those things are now being filled up with NA meetings and. Transients, so I I definitely see where she's coming from, I think we're just hoping that this is a temporary solution to.
Well, and I think that.
Keep it going.
I think that we agree with that.
Yeah.
So that your analysis of that situation too, and um and we are, this isn't, this isn't our end all.
Yeah.
To be, it's a place we can be for this year, and we're looking at what else we might do in the future. And if you have to do that there another year, that might be something we look at when that when that year comes up.
Yeah.
And I'm asking for you to guarantee we can be there from now on forever.
Thank you, it's a really hard.
And I agree with your concern about it becoming a place where people just hang out and think that that's okay to be there.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Canyon, did you have something else on that?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the um the funding of the insurance, I know that the um. Parks Fund is not. Overly. Funded, I'll just say that. Um, so I was thinking of suggesting that we would take it out of um reducing the building maintenance. So I don't know, have any idea where else we would get the funding from.
Well, according to our insurance agent, Rexless Store, it's already budgeted for.
Remember James.
Four months.
Last week.
At four hundred dollars each, so sixteen hundred dollars, so they're only three months, we're actually gonna get a little bit of money back. Will be four hundred dollars back.
Remember what comes out of in the in the budget then?
Well, our insurance is all comes out of the general fund.
So James explains at the last meeting that it was already factored into our insurance cost, it just was never taken out last year because at that time, nobody knew that though. You know, the WAC was gonna be closed, so it's already been budgeted and paid for essentially. Okay. Correct.
Correct.
Not paid for, but budgeted.
Budgeted, but insurance prices, insurance costs have gone up. Like everything else.
So is it more than what we've budgeted for?
No, I'm just saying that um we're going through a process right now with the insurance company. Stepping values of buildings, values of the assets inside, and the insurance premiums have gone up. Across the board, as I'm sure everyone's maybe noticed with their own homeowners insurance. So our our initial estimates may be slightly off, just like they are for gasoline, food, insurance.
Yeah, we did budget for one this year than we did last.
So that's good forward thinking.
Counselor Sledoff, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. I've been waiting. Have we looked at the, I know we had the some buildings set at the WAC for a while. And they got returned, uh, we looked at any of that.
I can actually answer that, I just had a discussion with the county yesterday about the pallet housing, and there is a good chance that we may be able to receive some of those. Pallet houses, although there's a lot of work involved in that, and we're still at the same dilemma that we do not have a place to put them.
Stuff being sure.
And they still have to be insured, and my understanding is they have to be placed somewhere where there is water and sewer. So there's there's work to be done, but it's a possibility. Not this year, though.
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
Yeah.
Uh, Kathy, you was on that last time, how did that work out?
With the pallet houses?
Yes.
Um, well, we used them one season, and then with COVID, we didn't. Well, we used them, I guess, maybe two seasons, um, they were, they worked out okay, we had a, we had a CCT camera on it. So we could look at it, um, we didn't really, they didn't really get the kind of use that we thought we they would get. And they seemed to ha- uh attract a lot of vandalism. Um, so the keeping them secure um and was it was a bit of a challenge. It was much easier to just house everybody in uh the warming center area that we had designated in the WAC. Um, than it was to use the pallet um houses, but if that is something that in the future comes in, you know, we can. Certainly work uh and put together a plan to to make it usable.
Okay, well, uh, another question, did did they need a? A solid foundation that they would be constructed on or just in the grass or or what?
Well, the ones we had didn't need a foundation, they were. They were e- essentially like on a pallet um and could be picked up with a forklift, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and moved around.
So that, so I know um, I know we've heard some different um. We've received different information about legislative initiatives and. Different grant funding sources that we've been hearing about that has to do with um working with our homeless population, so maybe as we look at the. Continue to look at those as well and watch those.
And I, and if, can I, and I will say, Audi, to add to what you and and Bobby just said is that. Um, I just wanna remind the council that the mission of the warming center is to provide a warm place uh when our temperatures. Um, become life threatening, um, while we recognize that there is a larger homeless population that we as a community wanna deal with. Our specific mission is just for cold weather, so um where we try very hard to stay just within that lane. Um, but I know that many of us are just as concerned about the bigger, the bigger boulevard of how do you, how do you care for the homeless and how do you meet their needs too?
Thank you, Kathy.
Like your motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry, can't turn that off.
That's okay. I moved to allow the Green Waters Community Center Building to be used and fees waived. For the warming center this winter from December first, two thousand twenty-two to February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. From six thirty PM to seven AM on nights and times when it's not already reserved and is below freezing, thirty-two degrees.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Borenson, any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Sledoff.
Hi.
Counselor Canyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Mayor Hallid.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you guys, thanks for coming, Kathy, thank you, Susan, and Ken, if you're still on board.
Mayor Hallid, can I ask, um, just for a minute, we're gonna have another meeting of our of our group next um. Oh gee, Susan, next next Wednesday at six thirty, and um we hope to meet at the Green Waters Building, I haven't checked the. Calendar yet, um, but uh I'm just an open invitation to anybody who is interested in volunteering, wanna, one wants to learn more about it. We'd we'd love for you to come, and if council, if you can pass the word around in your circles and spheres of influence, I would really appreciate that also.
Uh, that's Wednesday the ninth at six thirty.
Wednesday the ninth, that's six thirty, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you, guys, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up is nine point four Christmas lights for City Hall and the City Tree Funding Request. You got it, James, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so the idea here, you know, we've been through a lot of doom and gloom in our community the past three months. I'm able to see the sky or very far down the road. Uh, so I thought it might be a good idea to light this place up a little bit, um, bring some joy to the community. The the lights I'm requesting are high quality, color-changing LEDs. Where you can control them with remote control. Change a mini color you want, or they can have different patterns, et cetera, uh, there's some photo examples. Some of the trees that I've done, there's one on Highway fifty-eight, you can see, and there's three in Eugene. That you can see from most parts of Eugene, cuz there're a couple of them are two hundred feet tall, so. So you can choose your color, there's a duck game, it could be green, there's a beaver's game, it could be orange. Uh, they go around City Hall, St. Patrick's Day could be green. We can leave them up all all year round if they don't look too tacky.
Is it like a rope light?
No, it look, they look like regular light bulbs, only a little bit smaller, and they're black. Um, strings. And they're just, they're super heavy duty.
Are they the ones at Costco? Or like, like the ones at Costco?
I haven't seen one at Costco, these are Harbor Freight.
They're like, yeah.
And 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 I will also get some lighter weight ones for the city tree, it's only all be like this, but. So. So the work, what I can get done is around City Hall and up. The tree. At next to the art gallery, possibly another one, depending on part of the scope. To get the branches, we may have to rent a boom. A bucket truck, we have. And and if we have to do that, it costs one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars to rent a lift for a week. Um, but we have calls out to some fire departments. To see if they have a ladder truck, our our department does not have a ladder, cuz we have a lot of tall buildings around here. And it's not a need for it, um. I was thinking about posting on Facebook too, because strange things emerge from this city when you need them. Right, if somebody may just have one.
Yeah.
Um, somewhere, uh. So we're trying to get rid of that cost or turn or make it maybe just the cost of gas or something that's required department. If you want to donate it.
Well, to leave this before, they had something.
We ready to pay for it.
Hanging up all the baskets or the flags on the poles and stuff, that's not as tall as a tree though.
And that, and and like our snowflakes and stuff, that's done by E-WED. Thank you. And they do that separately on their own kind, their own schedule, so we never quite know when they're gonna do that. Until we see them out there, so it's it's kind of hard to.
I've got a call out to a couple people that have retired. Um, ladder trucks and hoping that maybe they would let us do like a donation to their nonprofit and stuff, but so far, we don't have any bites, but. We're still asking. So this is worst case scenario price, right?
Yeah, the seven, the one thousand seven hundred and seventy is what we have to pay, we have to rent it from a rental company, and I'm. So my original request was a thousand dollars for the lights and then up to seventeen seventy for the rental of the. Truck, which hopefully we won't have to.
Is is it any less if we didn't have to have it for a whole week?
I don't know if if they rent it for less than that, I can ask. I'll ask Robert.
Just wondering.
There's not one right across fifty-eight. Across what Rascals, there's a man that private owned.
Matt Alton is not bad.
Yeah, there's a bunch of new equipment, these are self-propelled man, whatever.
Yeah, I I'm gonna do everything I can to avoid that this cost. Cuz I'm cheap space.
Frugal, you're frugal.
Frugal, that's.
A couple of things I wanted to mention about this is that we are doing the tree lighting this year at the artworks gallery instead, so we're not purchasing a tree, cutting it down. We're using the existing large cedar tree that's right there at artworks, um. Tony Wasenberg has approached both James and I about having a little gathering there instead this year.
Done that before.
Yeah, I don't think at that lot, though.
Uh, yeah, it's been years ago.
Oh, okay.
Been done.
Okay, in the last.
Little smaller tree than.
Yeah, I think it's gonna look great, though. In years past, I know when they re- rented the bucket truck or the lift or whatever it was, it was to put the lights on. City Hall, the Fire Department, Public Works Building, and the tree, so.
Give it back too.
I don't remember their lights being on the WAC, but. Okay, not in the last, like, seven or eight years, it hasn't been on the WAC, but but maybe. Yeah, I haven't been there. They're old, they're old, and honestly, LED lights draw so much power, I can say just from the Fire Department building, it's a constant. Uh, having to replace them, and you have to unplug so many things just to run them, it's just, it's. It costs a lot more power, I think buying LEDs is really the way to go. I wouldn't be surprised if some of our strands don't even work, my experience doing the parade every year, we have to replace.
So will the budget that we have here cover all of what you're talking about? Or.
The the lift?
Every year, no, the budget for the lights.
Oh.
The the thousand dollars, I I think will will cover one wrap around City Hall and. The the tree, cuz the tree's pretty big. Yeah, I I I do have requests out to Walmart. And to Harbor Freight, seeing if they will give us a discount. But sometimes that process is slow. If if we do get some donations and stuff that if they may not, may not arrive in time for this year, but let's request a good name.
And maybe each year we can just upgrade and then again each time.
Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff. You're on mute.
I was going to uh bring it up too about Matt Aldemus, we might, I think he has two, a red one and a blue one. Or an orange and then a blue one. Uh, the Surrey up here, No Bridge, and we may be able to rent it for him. It'd be a lot cheaper than going during the town and tra- having transported it out here and everything else, but. Uh, he does have two of them up there.
Thank you.
I don't have a motion.
I'll do it, um, I moved to allow the CA to spend two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And from TRT funds to purchase lights for City Hall and the City Tree. And one thousand seven hundred and seventy to rent a bucket lift if needed.
I think those numbers were off.
Really?
Yeah.
That would be great.
I don't have any glasses.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes, you may.
Um, that the number. Um.
Oh, it's.
For the the first number be one thousand seven hundred and seventy, and the second number be a thousand.
Doing it from my phone with my glasses.
I know.
Um, yes, I will accept your amendment.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
You need a second.
I'll second that, okay. Any more discussion, go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
Yes, uh, is uh. Our CA going to be checking with Matt Aldemus up here too?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we. We're limited to a thousand for the rent, but not over?
No, we're limited to a thousand dollars for the LED Christmas lights. And one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars to rent a bucket lift if needed, but James is still pursuing other options.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor. Audi, can you take your hand down?
Oh, yes, yes.
Go ahead, Council Bjornson. Go ahead, Councilor Yarson.
Yeah, I was just curious how it would work if some citizens wanted to put together some funds to contribute to something like this because. I know there's a lot of giving people in this community and I think everybody agrees that with the doom and gloom of, of recent events. This would be a great thing to see at city hall and uptown and everything like that. So I'm not sure how fundraising works at the city level. Um, if a nonprofit has to take it on or anything like that, but if somebody wanted to contribute, is that possible?
Yeah, we could simply do a GoFundMe, um, and people could donate or businesses could sponsor lights. I don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, and someone could walk into city hall and drop off twenty dollars and we can.
A separate fund.
Yeah, and I know businesses, uh, businesses have contributed in the past. To like put the lights up around the trees and do different things.
Snowflakes.
Mm-hmm, so.
They're all sponsored.
Yeah, so it makes sense.
I'll, I'll also be requesting donations of ornaments from the community. We've got a couple of boxes up there, but not enough for a giant hundred foot cedar. Yeah, we'll put that out there on Facebook and the city website for donations of ornaments and monies. But what I don't want is people donating like a bunch of old broken Christmas lights.
You know, you're gonna get a bunch of the old C nine, you're gonna be loaded up with those. Nobody wants those. Thank you, counselor. Does anybody wanna start a GoFundMe or any type of thing for that? Do you wanna do that, Melissa?
Yeah, I could do that. I just wanted to make sure I was within legal parameters.
I think it'd be awesome.
Okay, I'll get on it.
Is there a consensus of people okay if she does that?
I'm fine with it.
It's pretty minimal.
It is.
I've set up a fundraiser for lots of people.
But I think we might wanna have James double check that it's okay.
I'm sure that it's okay. Uh, it's like the, how the parks can be funded for. For that project, for the new banner bar, we just have to get it for it. They had that fundraiser, people paid some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any, uh, more discussion on that? Okay, Jackie, can you call for a vote?
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Yarson.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Mayor Hollis.
Hi.
Counselor Cooper.
Hi.
Counselor Sledoff.
Hi.
Wilson Carey, thanks for your work on that, James. Nine point five Hill Street turnaround. Kelly, you're welcome to come up here. Is Rick or Robert coming?
Uh, Rick is online. I'm on, I'm on, uh, Zoom. So. Um, so I'll go and start, um, the, what you guys got in your packet today was, um. The meeting, it was in regards to the meeting we had with Kelly last week. Um, I've been away at training, permit training all day today for permit tech. And I understand there's been some new movement. Um. Did we lose, did the city hall lose internet again? City Hall, you are frozen. I don't know if you can hear me, but I see no movement.
They're frozen for me as well, Rick.
Copy that.
Me too, Rick.
I guess we just, uh, wait like last time. Bummer.
Yeah, we're still recording.
Okay.
One thing I can say, well, we're still frozen. And it's okay to go on recording is, I hope when we move to the city council chambers. That we do not have this kind of problems.
I sent a message to James.
You already sent a message, Trudy's out.
Yes, I did.
Well, then, you beat me to it.
It was still on there from the first time I sent it.
Copy, okay.
I think they're back up, but they're, oh, okay, there it comes.
Sorry, guys, internet went down again. They're fixing it.
We, we noticed, we happened to notice that. Okay, so I, I don't know where you guys lost me, but nonetheless, I'll just go and start over. Um, what you have in your packet? Uh, was from last Friday, was in regards to the meeting we had with Kelly last week. Um, I was away. All day today, uh, training for, uh, permit tech and I'm under the impression, uh, with some text messages with James that there was some new. Um, things that came to the table today. So I, I guess what would be best is if there was any questions regarding. Uh, last week's meeting and then, um, I think it would be appropriate to hand it over to James after that. So I was just curious if there's any questions regarding last week's meeting. With Kelly.
I. I'd like to hear about it if I could.
Oh, okay, yeah, it was great. So, um, we had a good meeting. I presented the, um. Uh, an option that kept a turnaround inside of the right of way, which did not require use of any, um. Of the whale field property, uh, that was in a map and I'm, that should be in your packet as well. That is what we discussed was, was that and then the timing of. We also discussed the timing of how this would roll out if that was what, uh, council chose to do. Uh, but nonetheless, my attempt was to find an option that kept everything in. Inside of the right of way and off of the whale field and I feel comfortable that that's what, uh. I produced. It is tight, but it is also a legal. Turnaround for fire apparatus in that proposal. I hope, do you all have an image of that?
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, Rick, I actually went out there today and noticed that the, um. The side of the road directly across the street from where you're proposing, the alley would be. Yeah, uh, there's only like thirteen feet from the edge of the road to where there's almost a straight drop off. And if, and all those trees, don't you think that would weaken that thirteen foot space and probably it would drop off?
Um, not necessarily and, and again, um. That could probably, that could be filled and there is also room with that in the hammerhead to move it north if need be.
North would be that towards semicreek part?
North would be, uh, pushing it farther into the alley?
Pushing it farther into, um, the, the right of way. Which is where, but there's also a three or four foot drop on that side as well that would need to be brought up. So there's. A powerful mailbox, a whole bunch of fill plus fill on the other side. Which would be completely clearing that whole entire tree line in front of our house. Leaving it nothing but gravel and dirt.
Go ahead, Rick.
No, I, I really didn't. I mean, um, Kelly's absolutely correct, but I don't think that, I, I, I still think that the proposal was solid.
I think that when we looked at it, um, on the computer, it seemed really solid and one of the reasons that I was even considering this as an option is because. We talked about the fact that on the east side of the well field outside of the. A hundred foot easement, there wasn't enough room for any type of hammerhead, but when I went back out there. I saw that on the other side of the, where the rocks were, um, there's an additional twenty feet back there. So there's plenty of room for the hammerhead, but now we go back to the, um, the shut off cap, the valve box. Um, which is kind of right in the middle of this area that is. Open essentially, um, to be able to have a turnaround and my proposal. Um, because, uh, when I went to this meeting, Rick, you told me, um, that it had been sinking. Or that you and Robert noticed that this pipe was sinking.
Yeah, we, yeah, the cap doesn't fit correctly and that's, um.
But the cap doesn't fit correctly because of the way the sleeve is cut. If you look, leave, it's very jagged and that pipe, that cap has never sat right.
Yeah, so I wasn't there when I, I mean, I don't recall with the cap, how it's set originally, so I, that's a conversation I'm just gonna have to agree with you on, um. I can't disagree because I don't. I didn't take pictures of it when it was initially.
Kelly's statement is accurate.
Yeah, I have a picture.
Pipe is just not cut.
No, 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 I, yes, what was she saying about the jagged cut is accurate. Um, but whether or not that, what, I, I think what I'm hearing is, um. That it hasn't sunk and it has sunk because of the jagged cut. That's something that I don't know that I can agree with nor, um.
I, why I was told.
Something I, that's.
You told me that the pipe was sinking because of the travel over the cap. Which there hasn't been any travel because that pipe cap is outside of our path that we've been using. For the last however many years and it's, it's got a boulder in front of it, so there has been no travel over it. And this cap has never fit right. You can see just, it just doesn't sit right. This cap has never sat right and when I stuck, when I looked down in there, um, it's open so that, that. And it's just a sleeve. It's just like a, you know, fifteen inch sleeve that's set in there, that plastic. Otherwise, it's a solid steel ten inch water pipe that's underneath the ground. And one of the things that I thought of was moving that pipeline, that pipeline goes kind of at an angle. East and then it just east down into the, the dry creek bed that's just next to the levee. But if we moved that pipe to get it out of harm's way to correctly seed everything. And bury it to the depth that it should be, cause this area was open for the last hundred years. Seven years ago, this pipeline was put in, but they cut costs and didn't bury it deep enough. So now I'm sitting here not having access to anything on my road because of this one problem. But if we got an estimate to have something, to have a pipe company come out and relocate it with the concrete. The four by. The five, five, five by six slab of concrete. My husband does this every single day. It's not a big deal. To have a company come out, re-dig it, reinforce it, or even just. Put this where it needs to be with concrete on top of it. To make it. Safe for travel. Or just bringing up the ground, the ground slopes more east towards the dry creek bed. Bringing in fill to bring that depth up. Is if you add more dirt on top, it adds more depth all the way down. So there are different options available.
Ask one question, I don't like it. Rick, at what depth should the pipe be?
I do not have an answer for you, um, but what, what I can say though is the reason the depth, like depth exists is because. Um, as anybody that does construction or remodels know, you have to tie into old existing stuff. And what happened here was, uh, the infrastructure that goes underneath the road. Was limiting on how deep we could go and as soon as we leave that. Where those, the old and the new join, it dives down to where it is much deeper, but that dive still takes. Five or six feet before it's of, of a really great depth. So the reason it's, it's at that depth is because the existing pipe that we had to tie into was already that depth.
Okay. What depth is it at, Rick?
But I would, um, that is the, I don't have that exact number in front of me. So.
And I think, I think it varies as well, so that would, that would require a study. That the cost.
I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna give you a bad answer, so, um, I could get you that answer in the future if you would like, but I would rather defer that to. Um, rather than give you a wrong answer.
So all of these suggestions for the, for a hammerhead, for Kelly's suggestions, who's gonna pay for all this? I mean, is it the city beyond the hook for all of this? Because. I, I realize that it's important to Kelly and that it's, um. You know, protecting our water resources, protecting our well fields, all those things are important, but I mean, we have streets that are virtually falling apart. Um, who's going to? Pay for this in the streets that are traveled all the time? So, um, that's a question I have. On this as well and, and I know that you and I talked, Rick and I talked about the piping and so, and I understood, um. You know, the importance and, and why things are what they are, but. I mean, as we move forward, who's going to pay for this truly?
In a second, Kelly. Go ahead, counselor Sledoff.
Yes, I've also been out to that location a couple of different times. And it seems to me when that. Valve was put in was. Probably placed in the wrong place and it wasn't, uh, made to drive over. And so. I'm wondering, is it the people who put that in? Should be responsible for putting it to the proper depth and to have, uh, people drive over it?
So. Well, that's, that, that's a good idea, um, we'll be chasing that pipe all the way down. Passed into the alley if, if we go that route. So.
Okay, swipe and another thing, if you put it, uh, propose, your proposed tee. Then go back into the alleyway, uh, there's a fire hydrant over there that has to be moved.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. Um. There were measurements taken today and, uh, that. Does fit the, the hammerhead, if you look at the hammerhead that I propose, has a twenty foot width and there is a twenty foot width there at the alley. Um, and that is, again, that was set to, um. Organ rules for fire apparatus, so a fire apparatus can make that tee then. I would definitely recommend putting some ballards around it to protect it, but I don't know that it necessarily needs to be moved. Um, that is something that a, a survey would help with, but then another, a survey is we're adding another three, four thousand dollars onto this, uh, concern.
Okay, and I noticed that ground from the, uh, pavement down. Uh, is what, probably a four. Four foot drop. To go down that alleyway, it drops and if you're at the trailer. To get in there, you're not gonna be able to maneuver around that, uh. Fire hydrant, so that fire hydrant is going to have to be relocated. You're gonna have to bring the ground level up. In that alleyway.
So.
It's quite a drop in there and then you wanted to propose taking out trees on the other side. And there's a drop there too, that's about a two foot drop. And so you're gonna have to put a lot of fill.
Go ahead, Rick.
Well, I was gonna say, if, in, in order to turn that alley back into a correct alley. We would have to dig out twelve, eighteen inches and then fill with gravel and smooth it out. So yes, we are aware of that. Uh, those costs are not included in the, uh. The recommendation because that was literally a phase two of this. The cost estimate you, you see here is just for the tee and it does include gravel like you had just discussed.
Bring both sides up to the.
Just the, the alley side and a little bit of the, uh. South side of Hill Street was included in the, the estimate you see in your packet.
Okay, I. For some reason I can't get a hold of that. That value in there.
Uh, our rough estimate is, uh, seven thousand nine hundred forty dollars.
Okay.
To put in the tee. Now, we only stopped at the tee because my proposal was to do the rest of the alley, uh. With hopefully, uh, grant funding, uh, on a connectivity project that would have included. About five or six other alleys as well. And.
Okay, and, and so back to the hundred foot from our well. Uh, about the only thing that's stopping that right now is the placement where the valve is. And I am aware of the cap has never fit right on there. I've always seen it upside down on that. On that filler all the time I've been down. And I used to use that turnaround quite a bit in there. Cause my pickup don't turn very sharp. I, I was, I'm, the day I had to make a three point.
Yeah, any questions, counselor?
Pardon?
Do you have any more questions?
Yes, I need to know, uh, how much it would cost to relocate that valve.
So that is a question that, um, I am absolutely not gonna answer right now. That is a question that I will turn to my. Uh, public works crew and our engineer to answer, so I will not be able to answer that for you tonight.
Yeah, can you answer if that's something that our public works can do?
Move the, move the, the pipe or the fire hydrant?
Move the pipe, the shut off valve.
Yeah, they're capable of it, but that's, that's, that's a lot more work than, than, it's a lot more, uh, yeah, that's, that, that's a lot of work, um, it's a lot easier said than done is what I was looking for there.
Counselor Spleedoff, did you have anything else?
Uh, yes, uh, that turnaround, if that's not allowed in there and it's within a hundred foot of the well, you're saying, uh, then what are we gonna do about the, uh, west side of that? That alleyway and the drive, there's two houses back there. Are you gonna shut those off or allow those to continue?
No, we are, we are working for, uh, answers with that, that they will, they will be shut off, we're just looking to do it as politely as possible.
So, how would tho- those two people access those houses back there?
They, they have access to the front of their house, their house about hills at the front. That, the, the path that you see back there is not a road, is not a right of way, it has just been used for so many years that it looks like one.
So that house fronts the, uh.
The property, the property, all those properties, front Hill Street, yes.
I drove by there today and how did, how did.
By the community garden? Is that what you're referring to?
No, that, the second house in there, when you go down to your, to our fence and drive to the end there and there's a gate across there and then the road turns and goes down to the right.
Right, that is correct, that property butts Hill Street at, at, on the north side.
I. So is it the long house? It looks like there's two separate houses.
No, that is all one property.
There are two, there are two houses on one lot.
Well, anyway, so.
Okay, so there's two houses on one lot, so you're gonna have to.
Hey, Audi, do you have any more questions? Cuz we have a lot of people waiting here for questions as well.
Okay, well.
I think.
Feel like I'm being shut off, but.
Rick has answered your question, he said that they are going to be shutting off that road and he's gonna do it as politely as possible. Am I correct, Rick?
That is correct.
Okay, then they're gonna have to go back and put a road up from, from Hill Street, right?
No, that's not what he's saying.
How are they gonna access their property if they?
Because he's saying the back area is not their property, he's saying it's city property. Not everybody has access to the back of their property. It's not a road, it was people just started using it as a road, but it never was designated a road and Rick, please correct me if I'm wrong interpreting you.
No, that is correct, that is absolutely correct.
Okay, so that is not a house that access from that easement, it's the, the house that fronts Hill Street then?
So the house that you're referring to is an, is an accessory dwelling unit and it's accessory to the front house, so that property abuts the front of the street.
Okay, let's get back to the property at hand that we're working on tonight. Now, Audi, do you have any more questions about the Hill Street property?
No, I would like a, a cost factor of how much it costs to move that valve.
Okay.
And then the total cost for how much it would cost to move the firehander and put that tree in and everything, right, you know, take trees out, make the tee out that way up the alley.
Are you right?
Yeah, and we already got a cost for rough cost from within the fire hydrant, which doesn't necessarily have to be moved.
With the pipeline, I think it's probably multiple people's questions. And you guys are gonna work on a cost estimate for that, Rick?
Yep, sure will.
Okay.
So, uh, but, uh, so in regards to the cost estimate for the pipe, where do you want us to stop? Because that twenty, that, that pipe goes, uh, at the approximate depth from what I understand all the way across hills and down the alley, so where would you like us to stop that price estimate?
How about you give some options?
Gotcha, will do.
What? I'm under the impression that that is just a shut off valve, it doesn't go across the street. Is, is that not right?
That ties in, that, that ties into the ten inch main that goes underneath the street and then that ten inch main then shoots north of the alley.
But it only shows it going this way under the levee, it doesn't show it going this way.
That map you see is only showing the new infrastructure, it ties in the old infrastructure at that ju- at that juncture.
So that shut off valve type goes underneath the street to the fire hydrant?
It, that is connected to the main line that goes under the street to the fire hydrant, yes, that is correct.
So you're saying that we, that you guys buried this pipe at the depth that it was to tie into the existing pipelines that were buried at that, that depth. So you're saying that all the pipelines in that area, including underneath our street from that fire hydrant are buried at that same twenty inch depth that's not deemed safe to drive over? Is that that's in case where it's coming from, that would mean that that's tied in at the same depth? Cuz it doesn't dive going that way, it dives going down into the dry creek bed. And the, the problem at hand is right at the opening in this little tiny section right here. That's the only section this much that you're talking about being driven over in the course of it going in different directions, but you just said that it ties in at the same level, the same depth.
But it ties in and goes across, it's not a juncture, it's not a, pardon me. It's the fact that it's a juncture, it makes it more critical and more easy to break.
But where's the juncture, is it on the Hill Street side or is it on the wellfield side? Is if it ties in from the fire hydrant to the shut off valve, that would be at the same depth, which means that all the traffic going o- across the street like us pulling into our driveway would be driving over a pipeline that's not the right depth to be driven over. Is that depth not correct?
That is partially correct, but what makes it, but what makes it more fragile is it's a juncture and it's where two lines meet up.
Go ahead, counselor.
Would it, um, make that box safer to be traveled over if we encased it in asphalt or cement so that it can be driven over just like all the ones that are put in the middle of streets and such?
Yes. But, uh, I asked Ed Hodges that today. Yes, that is a possibility, it costs, we don't know about pouring that slab of concrete on the other side, on the other side. However, we strongly against it for this reason, it says if that pipe breaks, the, it, the damages will be catastrophic. It would release million of gallons of water at one hundred.
Literally all the.
And could potentially breach the levee, but the potential cost, if that happening, is in the millions of dollar.
What's the difference from the pipe there from the pipe that's already under the street?
The pipe under the street was intended to go under the street, so depth doesn't necessarily matter if you have the cement in casings on, on the sides. But this, this was never done for the pipe that's going under.
What pipe is encased in cement?
I assume the one under the street.
The one that goes under your road, yeah. No, it's, well, on that area, it's just dirt.
Yeah, that's not even.
Asphalt ends like way before, so that's why I'm confused, we're talking about. Then we're talking about the depth of this valve shut off is the issue because it can't be driven over, it's not deep enough. And putting more dirt on top of it, even though it gives it more depth, won't make it more secure. Um, we can't drive over it because it's not encased in cement. We don't wanna move it because it'll be too expensive, but we're, we're willing to uproot trees and um, move roads and fill and this and that and power poles and fire hydrants and mailboxes. I just feel like this, this area right here, the only thing it would cost is to move that pipe. And my husband is or, who, we own a construction company, we've already, he's already told James that he's, I believe, that he's more than happy to pay for the concrete, putting it in, whatever it needs to do to reinforce this area so that we have access to it like we have for the last twenty years and we can use these boulders to surround the wellfield like the way our statutes call for. But the fact that Ed Hodges states in the very end of his very long letter is number six, it says that it sets a precedent to make it difficult to remedy future situations um, by private parties for arbitrary purposes and arbitrary states based on a random choice, a personal whim or rather than any reason or system. This is not random, it's not whim and, and it's not for no reason. This is literally, I've been fighting this since March, all of our neighbors have. We've put James and a bunch of other city administrators through the wringer trying to get this situated and all we're asking is that these things be considered, I understand that we don't want this to burst, but we're talking about, you're, you're telling us to just leave it the way that it is. But leaving it the way that it is, is not acceptable, there needs to be a solution to this. We have the, there's a huge, open, wide, flat field with a pipe that connects in two different directions at the same depth, which has been the comment that we've been receiving, it's not deep enough, it's not deep enough. It's not safe, safe to travel over. But it wasn't put in, it wasn't put in properly. It should have been moved over, there's all this area on the far east that we can move it and it's closer to where it is and it still leaves the field open if there needs to be bore maintenance. It's not like we're gonna fence it off and use it for like country fair. It's literally just an area for us to pull in to a couple cars a day to be able to turn our vehicles around. And that's what we're asking for and, and I'm willing to even help with the cost of moving the pipe if it's something that we can do, because again, it's not cutting down our trees or bringing in a back, a bunch of fill and ruining our scenic front yard. It's an open field that we won't even have to bring in any fill to, to raise that up. It's perfectly flat and there's seventy nine feet across, which is ten feet more than is needed for the hammerhead and more than enough room widthwise. Uh, Dawn and I measured out where the hammerhead would come into the, the right of way, um, it's barely twenty feet, barely between the property line, how it slants up and where the fire hydrant is and the farther back you go, the narrower it gets, and then on this side, you're talking about coming all the way over to my property line where my property is and clearing all of that and then all the way down to right, right where that first set of rocks are. It's a hundred and twenty feet wide, it would take up the whole front of my house to put in a turnaround when this field is open. This one little area like this is what's stopping it.
So, if I may, I'm gonna, the, the water system aside, so this comment is, is not regarding the water system, I'm gonna put on a different hat, take off my public works hat and put on my community development hat. Um, we have had multiple sessions where we invite the public to talk about parks and whatnot and just about every one of our parks plans has put something on that side of the field. Um, we, we invite the public to come and join us for trying to decide how we wanna develop our community. And that is another thing that I think is worth considering, um, we need to, we need to, if, if, I'm trying to say this right, but, um, I think if we, we'll do a disservice to everybody who's come to our planning events if we don't follow through with some of our plans and every one of our parks master plans, our Mill Park Plan, they all save that spot for a walking path and park-like area. So, well, I guess that's all I had to say about that.
Well, actually, can you elaborate cuz I, I wanna know, I make, I wanna make sure I, um.
So, the Mill Park Master Plan, the one that we most recently did with the, uh, National Park Service, we had the design charrette, we were, we invited about fifty people, we discussed what was best use for that at that time. Um, there are other park plans that were before my time and trail master plans that put trails through there. Um, there's been a lot of planning effort work that describes something else in that area. And that's, and I think that, uh, as, as the development of the community, I think we should honor those planning efforts.
Go ahead, counselor.
Um, Rick, when you guys did that planning, did you invite the community that lives around it to find out what their thoughts were on that?
We invited the entire, we invited the entire community, no, we did not actually send out letters to those exact residents, but, um, we put all over social media, we put it out, uh, through our normal proper channels.
Yeah, I remember, I, I attended, it was, it was at the museum. They had a lot of people there, it was a really big event, we had kids in the school there.
What was it called?
Um, I can't remember the exact.
This was like three or four ago.
Yes, the, the Mill Park, that's what, that, that was, the end result from that was the Mill Park Master Plan that was, uh, adopted by council and I believe twenty nineteen.
So, my question would be is normally when things like that, when planning process, um, is occurring, there's a notification that goes out to the neighborhood that it directly affects. Was the consequences to those actions made noted, were the, were the area people notified? Or even the people in your group that, hey, if we move forward with this, here are some consequences.
So, I, so, um, a little bit of minutia, so, uh, I think what you're referring to is uh, like variances and, and stuff like that, which is a little bit of a different, that's a quasi judicial planning thing, which, um, uh, design charrette is not, so no, there's no two hundred fifty foot away notice required for those, so no, that did not happen and that's what I was saying earlier was no, we did not actually send a letter out to the brewers or the people on Hill Street, but we sent out to the general community.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm just putting myself in anybody's position that might live on that street. Um, if I didn't have an interest in the, the the pro, pro, the project that you're speaking of, I never, it never would have occurred to me that, oh, if I don't get in this involved in this project, I'm gonna have, you know, my street is gonna be vastly changed or the.
If, if I recall, that one was also in the water bill like we do others.
So are you saying that?
There's no.
I, I, I feel like we're going down so many rabbit holes with this discussion, I just, um, that, I, I just, I feel like, I mean, it's almost eight o'clock.
Yeah.
We've been at this for a long time, we still have other items on our agenda and this, I feel like this is something that they can go back and rework because in the beginning there was the comment that things came in today that Rick was unaware of. Um, that was in your beginning of comments.
Yep.
And so, that tells me that, you know, that there needs to be other work done before it comes back to us again. Um, I feel like we've just spent a lot of time on this, this isn't something that typically would come to a council. Um, you know, I just, I think it's, I feel like it's time to move it back through. Because I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a resolution on what to do today, I mean, there's too many, too many variables that have to come into this and too many people and that are specialists in these areas that have to come back and give us the information that we need. You know, and I've said, I don't feel like, I'm not a specialist in this area, you know, I, um, I wouldn't be in a place of being able to make a decision on exactly what to do with this tonight.
I think the reason it was brought to council was because as Rick stated at the previous meeting that it is within the council's jurisdiction to make decisions on city streets.
Of the road authority.
Road authority, that's why it was brought to us. I definitely agree, we're running in circles, but I also think we need to come to a direction of what we have done, what we hope to see at next meeting.
I don't, I guess I'm, my confusion is Rick was saying that this, this area was talked about years ago about what to do with it. There is a walking path through there and we're not asking to do anything with it, but open it up on that side, like that's Like that's not gonna change any access to it for that side of the field. As far as what Rick was saying that they had plans for that, nothing's changed. It's still gonna be an open field. But with that said, um, Bobby, since March, I have gone round and around and around with the same people with the exception of Rick, who's new to this whole thing. And I have been told a hundred different reasons why this has to be closed off. So as far as the, the people that um, have jurisdiction, the people that have knowledge, they're the ones giving me the runaround. They're the ones telling me, oh, this is wrong. No, 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 it's this, but it's this, no, it's this. And, and I'm going, I'm literally calling people, I'm, I've been on the phone with LCOG, Oregon Health Authority. Everyone I can think of to try and get to the bottom of this, and nobody can give me a definitive answer as to why this was put in so deep or shallow. Why it can't be moved and why it can't be driven over. All of the pipes throughout Oak Ridge are buried at different depths. There's no other streets being cut off.
So, I say we take those three questions you just said. So, why it was buried so shallow.
It's to cut costs.
We need, we need a definitive answer. Um, why it can't be moved? We need a definitive answer. What was the other question that was another one you said?
Um, just what, we already decided we're gonna find out what's it gonna cost. And I would also like to get um, a subcontractor cost, if it's okay with city council to find out. Um, to have an outside um, company come in, someone other than Public Works to possibly move the pipe if city council isn't, or um, Public Works isn't able to put the bill to have it moved in a reasonable time and city council approves it being moved if we're able to find a location that Public Works is okay with, it's out of that entryway for a potential hammerhead on that side of the field. Um, would I be able to get uh, an estimate from a, a company that does this to see if we can get it done for cheaper than what Public Works would charge? The city.
Well, but again, we really don't wanna go cheap on this. I, I just, I would.
No, we don't wanna go cheap. I just mean, like, city wages might be higher than a, than a licensed bonded company that just does that.
Right.
That's all.
And I, I agree. I mean, this project, put in this new pipeline, wasn't done by Public Works. It was done by outside company, correct, Rick?
It was a mixture of both.
Mixture, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
But, yeah.
Okay, so um, maybe if we can close this and just recap what we're, what um, Rick and James are gonna work on and come to us next meeting and then you guys can continue working. I do appreciate the update. But I do, to some degree, agree with Bobby that it's probably not helpful for us to do the runaround here, but we do need to come to.
I know, it does go sideways a little bit when this gets to topic, but it's again, because it's been going on for so long.
Yeah. No, I agree, you need resolution.
Did you have something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually wanted to point out that um, that Kelly and I met today and she, and she's feeling very harassed over all of this. And I wanna know if James, maybe you can get her the information that she needs to. Uh, because that's something that I don't think our council can address. I think it's something like a formal complaint needs to be made. And the process for doing that and who's gonna deal with it. I'd like to see if we, the council can direct James to work with Kelly to get that resolved as well.
Yeah, a, a member of the public is welcome to file complaints online throughout the process.
Thank you. So, um, can we just have a recap of what's gonna come back to us later on? The cost, um, why is it so shallow? Um, you wrote it down. Cost of moving the pipe.
Is that, I wanna, I wanna know if it would be, if, if it would be safe to encase it like they do with a concrete slab over the top of it. And other city streets, I mean, we saw pictures at our last meeting, that some of those are encased.
And knowing and recognizing that whatever we do, we have to avoid any of that catastrophic failure.
Oh, yeah.
Did you have anything else, Rick? Thanks. Alright, can we, are we ready?
This was really just an updated project.
Appreciate it.
Protecting this well field. So, there are other pictures of other areas where we closed off access to the well field.
Okay.
Actually have a question on that. I'm concerned about why, if it was so important to put all these boulders up right here, right now, based on the hundred foot rule, why they're not already in place in the other spot that's way less than hundred foot.
Because we can't, we, we wanna give people at least a thirty day notice for those, those two houses, the two, sorry, auxiliary dwellings behind the houses to um, time to make arrangements before we shut that road down. But we have placed boulders to prohibit vehicular traffic into the well field from that side, from the garden side.
So, a thirty day notice has gone out to those?
No, that, no, we're still drafting that letter, then that letter will go to legal. After legal, then it will go out and it will give people thirty days. Uh, the affected properties, three, four effects properties, thirty days to produce any easements that we may not know about. We don't have any easements on record that we know of. Um, but that'll give me that opportunity to do that before we close that road.
Counselor Sledoff, I really do wanna end this conversation. We're at the eight o'clock hour. Do you have something? You're muted.
I'd like to know why all of a sudden it's come up about the alleyway that goes down past the garden and everything. How come this hasn't been addressed before this whole situation come up?
Cause it said.
It had been addressed a long time ago. It's just now, they have to do it because they're shutting the one off up there to try to make everything equal. If, if uh, our water works, people knew about this, had to have known about this hundred feet in excess. Then why didn't they catch this a long time ago and make this here? And you can't just put rocks up there because the power line goes through there and they have to have a easement up. The power line has easement back through that whole thing. So, we're gonna have to deal with that too, so. And given access to our power company.
Yes, Council, speed up. It'll, it'll be a cable gate similar to the one that was just installed yesterday at Salmon Creek Park on the uh, south end.
It's in your back one, or wait, it's a cable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so we are at the eight o'clock hour. I like to ask at eight o'clock uh, if we can go at least until eight thirty. We have a guest here from Rain. I, he's really important that he's able to speak here. He drove up from Eugene. So, I would like to ask the council that we stay at least till eight thirty. Counselor Coker and Yarthen?
Fine with me.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Rick. Alright, nine point six renewal of the MOU with Rain. Robert, you wanna come up and join? Go ahead, James.
Okay, I'll just read off the agenda bill for everyone. Uh, during the June sixteen, uh, City Council meeting, uh, Oxicon from Rain gave a presentation to account the taking renewal of the memorandum of understanding between Rain, Oak Ridge and Lowell, which provides uh, our cities with running services and continuing to help small businesses and startups through Rain's rural entrepreneurial development program. And other programs such as Rain's upcoming holiday market vendor bootcamp, which I've attached flyer for. And of course, I put their website on there. We, we've had a relationship uh, with Rain since two thousand sixteen. Uh, we have renewed it every year. Um, however, during the June sixteenth meeting, an agenda bill was not prepared. An emotion to approve the spending was not made. Uh, since the MOU was not available at that time, the June sixteen meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, so on or about July ninth, the MOU was inadvertently uh, signed by Mayor Pollitt. A touch copy of the MOU, which he received from the previous approach MCA, uh, Pete Fett and Martin sometime after the June sixteenth meeting. On or about August twenty-second, the finance director, Colleen Currie, paid the invoice for the uh, signed renewal of the MOU. Um, no one uh, remembered or caught the fact that the MOU was never formally approved by council. Therefore, council must now decide whether or not to retroactively approve the renewal of the MOU with Rain for ten thousand dollars. Um, for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year. That's ten thousand dollars per year, so twenty thousand in total for two year. Although this MOU is for one year. Um, it is city staff's opinion that the MOU should be renewed as the programs have helped quite a few small businesses in Oak Ridge get off the ground. If council chooses not to renew the MOU, uh, city staff will attempt to recoup as much of the ten thousand dollars already paid to Rain in the current fiscal year. But of course, any potential refund would, at the very least, have to be prorated for services Rain has already provided so far this fiscal year, which began in July first. In our budget, twelve thousand dollars budgeted for professional non-legal services for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Line thirty-four, when the exhibit attached. This is a two percent, uh, two thousand dollar increase from this one year, twenty-one, twenty-two. We know Rain's services are included in this part of the budget, however, the actual cost for Rain's services rose from seven thousand five hundred dollar a year for last fiscal year to ten thousand. Current fiscal year is unclear that twenty-five and over increase was anticipated in the budget or not. It's also unclear what else is included in that twelve thousand dollar line item. So, that is the issue that council must uh, decide tonight.
Well, can I talk about that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, I went into that line item, that general ledger code for last year. And it looks like what we um, funded that account, the budget for in that account is um, the rain, uh, the seventy-five hundred came out of it last year. And then small things such as um, like our fire service that comes out and checks our um, fire extinguishers. Our website services also comes out of that account, um, our document shredding, so it's a professional non-legal account. So, I, um, the increase, I, I don't believe had anything to do with um, knowing that the rain contract was increasing. So, I would suggest that if we do renew it, that we need to add a supplemental uh, budget, twenty-five hundred dollars to increase it up.
So, do we have a proposal? Did we get a proposal from Rain originally for the increase?
Yeah, I think, Ri, Robert, do you wanna speak about that?
Sure, the, the um, proposal that Oxa would have made, I wasn't here at that time, but the, the proposal that Oxa made and then the MOU that was presented um, uh, that unfortunately apparently you didn't all, all see, does include, does include um, uh, all of our services. Uh, a portion of the, uh, a portion of the increase had to do with uh, changing our model of services. Uh, we had, at the time, Oxa was serving all of Lane County. And um, that was becoming untenable. She was, she was just being spread too thin. And so, we had since uh, divided up Lane County, so we have three different venture catalysts now serving the area. Here we have Melissa Prestenario, who I believe you've met. Um, so that, that brought in um, additional expenses, which is one of the reasons for the, for the increase. We knew that was, that was on the way. We also were looking for match. We got a significant um, investment from Lane County to serve rural and also to, to um, uh, move us up the McKenzie to do some re, recovery work in the McKenzie. Um, but that, that required greater match as well. So, um, so those were the, the primary reasons for the, for the increase. It also, it's um, just life increases um, over time. We haven't increased since we started, I believe. So, um, that's my understanding of the, of the change in price. If you have any more questions, I can try and find other, I can try and find additional answers. If we've got questions I don't have answers to.
I have a couple of things I wanna say. Um, so, Robert, Oxa um, met with me shortly after I became the new mayor and they went over this with me. We talked about kinda Rain's past, Robert being new to Rain. I knew that he was involved with Small Business Association, right?
Small Business Development.
There we go. So, that's where I had met him originally and then we talked um, about the changes that they were trying to implement and the new roles that were gonna be coming up, the one that Melissa holds right now. So, at that time, they did let me know that there was gonna be a possible increase to in their presentation that Oxa gave in June sixteenth, I believe. So, um, there was no secrets. I think Oxa talked a little bit about this in the meeting that we had. She gave a very thorough presentation at council in June. Um, but I just wanted to make some personal statements because a city staff member did post on Facebook that this was something shady and that the council was sweeping it under the rug. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that I did not sweep anything under the rug. The council had no knowledge of this. City staff didn't sweep it under the rug. Um, James and Colleen um, asked me about it when they noticed that the count, the bill came in for it. And they asked me, hey, what's this Rain thing, you know, and I said, oh, that's the Rain contract we've always had with them as far as my knowledge was. I explained what it was. Um, didn't even dawn on us that it was a contract that was signed outside of a council meeting without permission. Um, what had happened was we were under a lot of stress going through budget meetings. Um, Chief Martin was our pro tem for a couple of months. Every day was completely hectic. My focus was on the hiring process. And when Chief Martin was closing things out, um, very innocently, he gave me multiple things to go through with him. One of them being the Rain contract. I did sign the Rain contract. I should have, um, you know, thought it out a little better, but in my head, I thought we already gave the presentation and did it. Um, there was absolutely no dishonesty. Um, wasn't trying to do anything shady or under the radar, hiding anything from the public or city council. I do apologize though that it happened and it was an error. Um, I am happy to ask any more questions on the Rain contract or any contracts. I absolutely realize that it would have been much better had an MOU been approved and in a council meeting with a motion. Is there any questions online? Counselor Sledoff?
Go ahead.
You have a question?
No, I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, okay. So, on that, after that, I do wanna say that um, I do really appreciate the work that Rain has done for the city of Oak Ridge. I have been to several of their coffee meetups and um, it is always a pleasant time, lots of great brainstorming that happens there. Um, really good, Colleen joined us this month. There's um, a wealth of knowledge that the new Melissa brings up. What's her last name?
Prestenario.
Prestenario, she's awesome. I highly recommend any council to attend one of the coffee meetups. Um, she is just so knowledgeable and um, helpful. So, I think they're nothing but an asset to anybody that wants to start up a business here in Oak Ridge. Absolutely.
A little bit more, because we have a new person in the role. Um, our model is always to be investigative first, so we, we don't come into a community with, with expectations of how we're gonna do things. Our role is to ha, have meetings and listen. And I know you've, you've been with us for some time and listening has gone on, but with a new person, there's a new opportunity there. And I'll just, I'll just point out some of the different types of, of projects we've done in different communities around the state. In Grant County, we're running a series of street fairs because they wanted a way to get their makers out of their garages and actually into the communities. In Florence, we ran a, um, it was digital, so everybody could participate, but it was specifically for Florence. And it was a business bootcamp for artists because they wanted their art community to be more active contributors in the economy. And then up in Lynn Benton County, uh, we project managed a series of three-minute marketing videos specifically for the cities that we work for. Highlighting the entrepreneurial potential in their communities, so they have these marketing videos. All very different projects, and it's a result of going into communities and listening and ultimately finding out. If you wanna move a needle, what's the needle? And once we know that, that we can actually do projects that are, that are custom designed for the communities. And that's one of, one of the things that I think that our, our efforts up here have been, have been solid. They've been a little vanilla. And I'm hoping that Melissa will identify something unique, something that, that Oak Ridge. Wants to have happen for its entrepreneurial and small business community. And then we can move forward with a part of, a part of this extra twenty-five hundred is having somebody with a little bit more focus. On just this area so that we can do more of that work, which with uh. With someone like Oxa who was serving the entire county was just, it was hard to do, so. So that's my, that's my hope for Melissa and her service here and our organization, so. I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's my expectation.
And Melissa is starting some of that work already, trying to come up with unique ideas for Oak Ridge.
Yeah, good. Good.
Okay, go ahead. So, um, I think. I feel that. The mistakes that happened with this, I think they were. Honest mistakes, and I think it's important just to run from them and move forward for all of us. Um, and I know that Rain has been a very valuable partner. For our city, and I really appreciate all that Rain has done for our community. Um, so with that said, um, I moved to approve the renewal of the MOU with Rain. For the next two fiscal years, two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that. Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Booker. Is there any more discussion?
Because um, James did say one year. I wanna point out that we do have two-year MOUs, but within the MOU. Is a, is a clause that says you have the right to, to pull out halfway through. Um, so for that second year, but please let us know by May if you're going to, so that we could, so that we can um prepare for that, so. Um, it is a two-year MOU, but with an opt-out midway.
So it's fiscal. I appreciate that.
Did you need to adjust your motion? Did it say? Are any counselors online have any questions? Okay, go ahead, counselor.
Sorry, of course. Now I have to try and remember my question, um. Oh, I wanted to find out if we have a process. I feel like maybe this could be used as an educational experience. Having this accident, um, being that one happens, I wanted to find out if we have a process for. Um. Once something has come to council. Like then does it get moved to someone else's desk for the signature or whatever? Would it, I'm just thinking that obviously the process. Has gap.
Mm-hmm.
It needs to be addressed, so I'm wondering if we could implement something that would make maybe uh. One of my ideas was maybe an actual. Copy of the agenda bill that we normally get when we get a contract. Be attached to the contract so that we, we see that it went through, yeah, you could see as you're signing and it's already gone through council.
Mm-hmm.
A certain date or something like that. Um, but I agree with Bobby a hundred percent, it's obviously. You know, with that timing and pro tem C A and.
A head of new living arts and.
Um, I mean, honestly, there, there's, there's enough. Blame to go around. A little bit to everybody, you know, the, the, the previous C A could have caught it before he forwarded Christie to sign. Christie could have caught it. Before she signed it, um. Finance Director and myself could have caught it before the check went out. And all counselors could have caught it before they approved the minutes from June sixteen. Cause that may have triggered a memory like, oh wait, there's no agenda bills, and I'm not, so I'm not blaming anyone first. I'm just saying we should all. Strive to be a little more diligent, and I realize this was a weird transition period. Um. Definitely honest mistake. There's no, no one had anything to gain, um. From this contract, nobody's connected uh to Rain. If they were, they would have had to express that during tonight's meeting and June sixteen. That there was a conflict of interest, so I'm not worried about anything like that, but I'm just encouraging everyone, you know. Be diligent. Actually read your minutes, you know, before you vote to approve that kind of stuff.
I actually have a comment on that. I'm confused as to how uh we could have caught it there when it didn't even come up during the meeting that there was a contract. I watched the video, it's, we taught, Rain did their presentation. Uh, Mayor Hollitt told the council that. We're gonna be getting a contract soon. This will be coming in front of us again later down the road. There was no mention of a contract, a dollar amount, no nothing. It wasn't in our packet. It wouldn't be in the minutes. So I'm not sure how that would come and fall back on the council for the. We wouldn't even, we didn't even know until we heard about this Facebook post that a contract was signed. Or that it ever even came to. The city.
Oh, I know, but it's renewed every year since two thousand sixteen. We, we've renewed the MOU with, with Rain. I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not putting any blame on council. I'm just saying. Uh, at some point, since the contract was discussed. Somebody could have hypothetically said, wait. We had that meeting, but when, where, where's the contract? Maybe send an email. All hypothetical, I'm just saying everyone should be a little more. Diligent. And.
I think there's a learning curve too. You know, you catch those things when you've been in the seat a little bit longer. I mean, you two are both brand new. I was fairly new at being a new mayor as well, so.
Well, I do like the idea of having like a gender or whatever, because I know like. When I do TRT funds or whatever, I always go back through the meeting and make sure, okay, yes, this was approved and I do take my backup. And, you know, put it in there, so I think that just a little piece of backup was great.
Even just a cover sheet that could be quickly filled in. When was this contract approved? At what meeting? Or like you said, the agenda bill?
Hmm.
So if you guys have an idea, do you wanna bring something back at another meeting? Or do you have a specific suggestion?
No, I'm just throwing it out there that it's an idea for a process that could be implemented so that it doesn't happen. I mean.
Mm-hmm.
I can see where, if it, if it was me a month later. After meetings already happened and uh contacts in a pile that, oh yeah, we, we had rain. They were here. They didn't give us a contract or we, maybe they did, sorry, but we were not given a contract. And in our packet to consider and sign off on or make a motion on. So. Yeah, you know, I can see where I could have done the exact same thing.
This is that big old ten K number. What's the magic number?
All right, if there isn't any more discussion. Counselor Sledoff, go ahead. You're on mute.
Okay, uh, yeah, I agree with the Don. Maybe there's something that we should have the agenda built. With the bill, uh, so it comes through a little thing, so when. It comes across somebody's desk, they say, oh, well, there was an agenda for this, this sip back to. Council for their approval. And instead of just trying to rely on memory, well, did we have that or not? You know, and so it would become. Back in with the bill, here's the agenda that was approved in our packet and. Yeah, we approved it or we didn't approve it, and to blame it on city council for not finding it. Because. Okay, well, anyway, that's something that, that maybe we could think of when it comes in like that, um, from. A company that we have the gender bill with it, that way they can see that it went through council and it was approved. And then it can be taken care of, just a suggestion.
Well, I can say I'm gonna be um. More worried, concerned about it myself. Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Whitney. Mayor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Sledoff.
Hi.
Ms. Loby Aronson.
Hi.
Counselor Dan.
Hi. Counselor Chris.
Hi.
Ms. Lurkoker.
Hi.
Motion carried. Thank you all, and then that will be a part of the supplemental that you're working on. I made a note. Thank you so much, Robert, for coming up here. Appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
All right, nine point seven crosswalks and storm drains art project. Rick, are you still on?
Yes, I am still here.
All right, are we gonna let him?
Well, um, is, is Elise with us?
No, she's, I mean, she's not.
Because, uh, okay, um, did you want this one, James, or I could just go ahead?
I can take it if you like, cause I can make it quick.
Yeah.
Real quick, so it came to me about a crosswalk project like three or four months ago. And we were trying to get it on the agenda, and then our fires hit, and it really just did rise to the top of importance. And so I brought it to both James and Rick, and they've got some other cool ideas to add to it. Elise isn't here tonight. She is working on her. Brad program, is it, right now at U of O? And I know she was really busy tonight, so that's probably why she can't be here, but it's Elise O'Brien that, um. That's gonna be involved in this. Go ahead, James.
That's all I was gonna say.
That was weird.
Well, then I was.
Yeah, so the painting projects are part of crosswalks and the storm drains is storm drains. We already have to paint because of our existing obligations. With the DQ. Um, so we're just asking for permission to move forward. With. Project ideas to get processed and it's.
Did you guys get a chance to look at all the cool photos? Oh, yeah, okay.
I thought that there was something in there though about a. TRT project. Funding, no?
Not asking for any money at this time. We anticipate that's where some of the money for, for the paint would come from, but.
Oh, yeah, it said storm drain. It said partial storm drain.
Yeah, yeah.
So in my notes, I could, couldn't we use some TRT?
Yeah, and we did talk about that a little bit, but. Rick had mentioned that he already has to do this for his project, and it ties in really well. So Rick, do you wanna talk a little bit about the storm drain project? Explain that.
Sure.
A win-win for us.
Sure, so, um, in our uh TMDL, which is total maximum daily load. Um, for DEQ reporting, one of the things that we've said that we were gonna do is public education and public awareness. Uh, that there are storms lead to, straight to the rivers, and one of the best ways to do that is to put river and fish art. On the storm drains, storm drains, so that when people are, are, when they see the storm drain, they see a fish and it just kinda clicks with them that, hey, this goes straight to the. The river, and that's really the whole concept behind painting the little fish or whatever um artwork is, is chosen. Fish-related uh on the um. Storm drains. So, I don't know, that answer the question, it's, it's, it's a.
Yep.
Public education.
Yep. So one of the things when I, when Elise brought this to me, I had never heard of it, so I immediately got on Pinterest, downloaded a whole bunch of. Ones that I thought were really cool, so um, these are some of the examples, and when we talked about it, um. I, I think she really wants to work on it with Ubera, but the idea is that. I'm hoping that council kinda give them the direction that it's all in keeping themes, you know, things that are kinda symbolic of Oak Ridge, so. Um, you know, we've got the example of the tree here, the salmon and the marigolds and. Um, and those types of things. We agreed that it wouldn't be political messages like Black Lives Matters or. Any, anything like that. It would be very things, um. Right, things in keeping to Oak Ridge and heritage, and then um, as Rick was talking about, things that remind people. That if you throw things down the drain, it's going into our, our fish.
Correct, and um, one of the things that I wanted to mention is Springfield has what they call the upstream art. And I was hoping to, rather than reinvent the wheel, I was gonna try to just uh copy what they had because they're doing a successful program already. And Portland has the city street repair project, which is again, another successful program already. So rather than reinventing the wheel, those are gonna be my um. My templates. For, for making the project work.
Well, I think it'd be really fun to, um, like in front of the schools if. We carry this there to really work with the school on what theme would work well for them and. Something that they can use to help with any of their educational stuff with students.
Yeah, yeah, we, we discussed that in our meeting about allowing, I think, what intersection were we talking about starting, Rick? Was it right here?
We were talking about starting at um Ash and, yeah, right in front of City Hall, so that you have three, uh, four crosswalks right there. They could also tie into the art on um. Uh, the Uptown Building, so that would be really arty, art, artistic area, and that's, I think, where we were talking about starting.
Yeah, and we talked about it, them kind of moving along, and then the school could work on their corners. Hopefully, we keep going. We're hoping that. You know, we're obviously going into bad weather. This wouldn't be the right time to start, but maybe when it warms up, we start and maybe we have something. Part of it to unveil at Tree Planting Festival was kind of target date.
And even getting down like on the rainbow where you can see it from.
Yeah.
The highway.
Yeah.
A lot of tourism and.
Yeah.
Different ideas and with that.
Yeah, this is kind of a side topic, so I'll say it real quick, but at our rain meeting, I brought this project up. And one of the things Melissa was talking about was other cities, I think, is it Chicago that has the cow thing that Oprah started? They brought that into California, and so people say that. You know, what's your cow for your town? What, what are things of interest for tourists to come and look at? And so we kind of jokingly said that, you know, this could be Oak Ridge's cow. One of the things when people come here, they're interested to see our crosswalks. And our art and stuff, um, I thought it was a good idea. Melissa really thought it was a, a really fantastic id- idea to. You know, kinda, that's something that we could put on our websites and, and all over the tourist, tourism. Counselor Sledoff? You're muted.
I have, I am trying to find the mute. I have uh a couple of questions. How long? Does the paint last? And do you? When it wears out, wears down? What's the maintenance like?
Did you get a chance to read your packet? Because they've provided the brands of paint and a whole bunch of information on that.
Right, I'm, I've got it open now. I was able to find that. A lot of the stuff was hidden. I couldn't. I don't know where it was at. I, I had to click on the whole bunch of stuff and finally get it to, to open up on this. And I uh come from Portland and they did have. Uh, quite a bit of uh. Stuff going on up there, and I thought it was kinda neat. It's just, I was curious, you know, we're gonna, this. Once you put paint down, you're gonna have to keep doing it every year or uh upkeep it's on.
I don't, it's every year, and one of the things that Elise mentioned was to, it's better to choose artwork with more black space. So if you look at some of the artwork that we've put on here, you'll see that it's not full color. There's lots of area that's not painted, so. That brings down the cost and, and also less maintenance. Did you have something, Rick?
Well, I was just gonna say that the, the lifespan is between one to three years, um. And maintenance of other people's artwork is probably a hurdle we'll have to come across.
Yeah, how many, how many of these storm drains do we have?
Oh, gosh, I don't have that answer off the top of my head, but we have. I'm gonna guess uh fifty to a hundred. I'm gonna guess, uh, fifty to a hundred.
Wow, okay. I was just kind of trying to get an idea of the.
And this project could be something that starts in the uptown area, but it's could be something that we do. Um, on the highway fifty-eight side, not across the highway, but maybe. The intersection we talked about was from Rainbow, you know, Chevron over to Dairy Queen could be one, you know, some. Intersections that maybe get used a little bit more, but probably not across the highway.
And you know. Thinking of, so I've spent a lot of time at Dornbeckers with Abby and anytime you want to go to a department or a floor. It's like, look for the fish, like for the starfish, look for this, look for that. And this could be a way to, um. Develop and more define locations within our community as well to help with people finding spots to go and places to go and. You know. It can really just grow into something really. Really exciting.
Well, we do have a couple more things to get to, so if there isn't any questions, um. Do we have a motion for anyone?
I can, I have it up. I can. It's still full kind of foolish after that last one night. Um, I moved to allow city staff and Ubera to move forward with the crosswalks and storm drain. Storm drains art project.
I'll second it. Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Is there any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Whitney. I. Counselor Cooper.
I.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Sledoff.
Hi.
Counselor Beardsen.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Hi. Thank you guys. Motion carried. That'll be exciting to see some of that happen. Uh, so we are after eight thirty. We still need a report from the city administrator and financial staff reports. Oh, I'm sorry, nine point eight as well. Are you guys willing to go a little bit longer? Hopefully it doesn't take until nine.
I think it would.
It might. Counselor Coker, Sledoff. I'm good. Okay.
I've been doing all day.
Okay, we have two stops and three, three stops. Okay, okay. Um, well. James, did you have anything pressing? I feel bad. Okay, the only thing I did, we absolutely have to talk about is our next meeting is. Oh, the seventeenth. We don't have to talk about it. Never mind. I was just making sure it wasn't on Thanksgiving. So our next meeting is the seventeenth.
Okay, good.
All right. Public comments. Any comment from the house? Okay. Is there any public comment from the Zoom? Yeah. All right, state your name and address and you have three minutes. The C Ketchin, four eight three zero zero Hill Street. I wanted to comment about Rain. So just because we've done business with them historically. Uh, it was interesting that even the guy that came to speak on their behalf referred to their past performance as vanilla. And that's exactly what I experienced. Sitting in on one of their seminars, it didn't. Offer anything that I thought that I needed, but. He said that Ox's territory was too big as an excuse and before Ox there was Ariel. And I just want to say that it's important to remember when these nonprofits approach small towns like ours. That this is a business for them. If they can pick up ten thousand in every little town, you know. We need to think about our library. And I feel like the ten thousand dollars is a more important resource to be spent at the library. People who are wanting to research business and things can find many resources there. And I think in our current situation, Rain is an expenditure that we should not be spending money on. And I would like to see, uh, people in the community who have benefited from them come forward and. And reaffirm that it's something we should be spending money on. I was not impressed. And again, even the spokesperson for them tonight referred to their performance as vanilla. So why are we rehiring them? That's just what I wanted to say, food for thought. The next thing is, um, and I'd like to see some of their statistics to prove their worth. Uh, businesses open and close like a. Swinging door in Oak Ridge and I don't think that Rain's doing much to help. Um, the storm drain project, I would love to see you reach out to the Art Council. The Art Council artists, this could be a very good project for us to do. Stenciling for you. Work in the community and bring exposure to the artists that are in Oak Ridge. This is a big priority. And, um, I would very much like to see you to reach out to the artists here. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you. Go ahead, Trudy Hammond.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, seven, six, three, four, nine. While I'm at way. Um, I'd like to make a comment on the Rain program as well. In two thousand sixteen, when they came to Oak Ridge and. And they started, I was gung ho and jumped in because I had my nonprofit for the animal services. Hoping to be brought to fruition. So I, I latched on to that program. But was highly disappointed, you know, with, with, um. The fact that I was trying to be, become a nonprofit in Oak Ridge. I had attended a lot of their, uh, meetings and classes and presentations. I set meetings up with. The fellow that, um, Wash, who, who was in. In the beginning of the, the Rain program. Met, scheduled two meetings with them in Springfield in which he wasn't there. And when I called the office. I was informed and this was right after they got the seven thousand five hundred dollars, right after, um. They received that money. He went back to India to, to work on his tea farm. And that really hurt and it really made me mad. But three years later, I established my nonprofit alone and, and, um. And, um, the only advice that he did give me was. Which program to solicit my nonprofit. Legal, uh, work with and I had the eighteen hundred dollars for the big package. But he convinced me to take the smaller package, which now I have to pay additional fees if I want to do, um. Have my tax forms done for me if I wanna. If I wanna, um, change the name and, and add a, a DBA, which I, um, now is gonna cost me ninety bucks. But it all would have been included had I got the big package and, and that was what I saved for and I had counted on his leadership and guidance. To do what was gonna benefit me and make things easy for me in the long run. And I definitely let him know I had the funds for the. The larger amount. The money wasn't the issue. It was the expertise I needed. And so I really felt bad that I got left. That I got, um. Fell through the cracks. It was a nonprofit for animals and, and not once have I ever seen any entity prioritize. Animal services. Um, but I just have to say I disagree with, with Rain's. Um, performances, um, and I wouldn't waste the tax dollar on, on it, quite honestly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any more public comments? All right, no counselors comments. Hearing none, meeting adjourned at eight forty P M. Good night. Bye.
Bye everyone.
Good night.